We'll start off with figuring out how to raise my seat again. And then we'll do the flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, God, and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Some meaning to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing done. We'll move on to... Dom, we revised the agenda, right?
We revised it. We should pass a motion to approve it. Item 3 there.
Entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda.
So moved.
Motion is second.
Second.
Second by Kate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes. So we'll move on to public comment. Anyone with public comment? Sharon, how are you tonight? Come on up.
Well, no, I just have a question because I don't see it on my agenda here as far as parking. Are the new machines in or are they... What's going on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you may have been... You may have heard that. Yeah, so the license plate reader has been... is in and installed and has been utilized. I know there were many tickets distributed last week because I received a couple complaints that people were not notified that they would be starting getting tickets.
Right. I knew they were giving up tickets this... the last couple of weeks. I just wanted to make sure because we haven't given them all, so that's why I was just wondering if they'd come in. And I thought there were signs that had to go up or something at one time. Somebody told me that they had these scientist boxes. What was going on? But I mean, maybe not. I just wanted to know if they were... if the machines were in.
They're up and running. I think we issued 50 last week.
Well, that's good because we didn't issue anything until all summer long. And so...
Is there anything additional in terms of education that we need to do? I wasn't aware of that. Signage or...
There's no signage, man. It's the same ordinance. So we've been accomplishing the educational objective through the waiving of tickets on case-by-case basis.
So the complaint I received, Sharon, was that we did not give notice that we would be back giving tickets. So I think people wanted to be notified that the system was in place and people would be receiving tickets. I sort of compare that to if you're speeding on the interstate for a whole month without the state police on the U-turns and then one shows up. Does that mean you don't have to pay that ticket because they didn't give you any notice?
I've got a couple of them. Maybe I'm giving tickets so far. But that's... The only problem that I have as far as the retailers downtown have... Who's parking there at 9:00 in the morning? None of the retail businesses is open until 10:00. We can come in there at 9:00. Every parking spot's jamming downtown. And it's not retail. I mean, it's not... It's not my employees. It's not anybody else's retail employees because nothing's open until 10:00. So it's got to be all these offices and apartments that are above everybody that's not parking in the garage. So hopefully that maybe this reader will help that situation. I don't know.
Let's give it a month, I'd say. You know, we've never had, in my opinion, a top-tier parking enforcement program because we didn't have something clear and conspicuous like a parking meter, which was a good thing, I think. But we have a really cobbled-together enforcement mechanism with chalking tires and coin tires put in the corner on top. And we're really in a whole new era where... Now, we've invested substantially. We're $50,000 into a system to enforce it. And we're pairing that with two hours free parking in a garage. Let's give it a month. Let's see where it's at.
I mean, I had talked to Steve back in August, and he told me the machines are going to be in September. And then nothing was done in September. Nothing was done in October. Nothing was done in November. And then I had found out that the machines hadn't... in October, hadn't come in yet and stuff like that. So I was just wondering if they were in and being used and all that kind of stuff.
They're up and running, you know, and actually if you're interested, you can do a ride-along and see it and see how it works.
I don't have time this time of year.
I'll do it January. I'm not... Sharon, your point's well taken. It was embarrassing to have that we couldn't get the contractor on site to deliver them. And then there was an interaction between the software and server size and firewalls. It needed to be, you know, just classic stuff, right?
Yeah.
But we're finally there. Now's the time to monitor and see if it helps.
Because, I mean, October, November, December are our big months, you know? So that's the time that we really need the... as far as retailers need the parking now. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
One other thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor. What we should mention is that it took us a little while, but now we have the two-hours-free programs in the parking garage and have been promoting that. So folks who are shopping downtown, we should be getting the word out that you... If you can't find a space right on Main Street, you can park for free for up to two hours in the garage. And that's programmed now. That was another software... A little bit of a challenge at first, but we've got it now. So we'll see how that works too. And I'd love to get feedback from you and the other merchants about that.
And deer season. That was the other thing that happened.
The people we needed weren't there.
Anthony L. Sharon, I'd like to thank you for coming in and thanks for everything you do downtown. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Number five on the agenda, Chip, if you want to come forward. You have a full list for us.
Thank you. Good evening. First up is...
Tim, you said he did that. Lift his chair up. He lifted it really quickly.
I'm supposed to make it like the mayor look better.
You said he did that how he did it very officially and very quickly and lifted it up.
Depending on how these things go, we're like, I'll go down or I'll go up.
I thought Chad did it to me last time, but I don't left the case.
Now you're stupid at my level.
Thanks for coming in, Chip.
We communicated before to the council. We have at least one major manufacturer in the service industrial district that has brought to our attention the fact that, you know, on their site, which, you know, is the city's site, so not always the biggest manufacturing site you can find in the county, that you have some issues with future stores they're going to need and the type of silos that you typically get on the market. Right now, in the service industrial district, if you want to build a building or structure that's up to 40 feet, I think, it's really not an issue with the DRV, for instance. But if you want something taller, you can ask the DRV for special permission to have a structure that goes up to 85 feet. And for a while, everyone was fine with that. But now we have specifically, in this case, the Dairy Farmers of America, St. Albans Creamery, asking us or basically informing us that they're going to have an issue because some of the silos they need to get for future operations go up to 100 to 105 feet. We brought this issue to the council a couple of months ago. The council referred to the planning commission, a request to make an amendment to allow a DRV permission to go up to 105 feet. The planning commission discussed it for two meetings, one of which was their official hearing that they have to hold. They did have a couple of recommendations. So before you... There's a memo. Here's the notice. There are the pages with the actual amendments on them. One of the things the planning commission did add was, first of all, that if you wanted to go above the current waiver allowance of 85 feet, up to this new potential limit of 105 feet, the structure's for storage and processing only. You can't build a skyscraper office building up to 105 feet. It would have to be something that's probably a little more limited and it's it's probably normally a little taller, like a silo, and it's only for processing and storage. And the other thing they added is that there's a special setback now on those... On these proposed structures that go up to 105 feet, that they have to be set back a certain distance from the boundary of the service industrial district based on how tall they get up to that 105-foot limit. Otherwise, the section of the regulations that deal with height and also include the various different waivers for all of our different districts, that's Section 513, that's where all of our amendments here are included. We basically rewrote it to be able to specifically address this new proposed limit allowance of 105 feet with the recommendations that I just described.
Do we have any questions for Chip? Just out of curiosity, Jason, what would be the timeline for new silos? Do you know?
Probably permitted by early March, with construction to start shortly thereafter.
Yeah, the silos, perhaps, we're having about... tend to have about a six-month lead time. So once we were in good position from a permitting standpoint that we could make the purchase, it would take about six months before we'd be able to get it transported and go to the new site. So ideally, we'd like to do that ahead of next winter.
So how much extra storage capacity are you getting by having the extra footage?
In this case, it doesn't go... This particular silo, the size we're looking at right now, don't... They'd be in that 95 to 100-foot range, but that way you allow for, you know, bases and alcoves, et cetera. But it takes you from 50,000 gallons of milk or milk products to 70,000 gallons. So it's roughly four truckloads, tanker-sized loads that you'd see going.
And it's, what, cost prohibitive for you to put another 60,000-gallon silo in?
Right now, the tallest one that would meet that limit is 50,000 that we have on site. So hence the 20,000 gallons that we're looking for. I wouldn't say cost prohibitive as much as... There is cost, obviously, and having costs to do more silos that are smaller. You tend to run at compounds when you have the support equipment to get in and out of silos, valve clusters, process piping, et cetera. I think the real limitation you tend to run into is just space and square footage and footprint is where that gets cost prohibitive.
Are you familiar with this picture?
Certainly familiar with that view, yes.
You want to come take a look at it?
Oh, here we go. Thank you. Sorry.
If you look on top of the... I'll call it the approved facility, the concrete structure. Above that concrete structure is... What is that? A cooling fan? Cooling tower?
Yes, it's a cooling tower for condensing.
And how high is that?
That is about 85 feet. I think we measured it.
How high?
It approaches that 85-foot limit. I don't believe it's in excess of that, but I want to verify and make sure.
And looking over to the left, is that a flag I see?
Yeah, that's a windsock to the... Oh, to the left, that's the flag, yes.
Okay, and how high is that?
Again, it's in 85, maybe. That might be a little more than 85. We'll have to measure it.
In proportion to what you... I see with the red rectangle here on top of the first silo, that flag looks like it's almost as tall as that.
It does, but that is in the foreground, so I can assure you the flag is considerably lower than the top of that red rectangle.
So the farther away you get from something, the higher it looks? Is that... Or is it the other way around?
Well, I'd say the opposite of what you just said, by the perspective comparison you're making. So, and I think that's the point of the setback recommendations that you're hearing as well.
Tim, you'll notice in that picture, the Bordeaux Brothers grain elevator.
Yeah.
But we know for a fact it's taller. It's a hundred twenty-five feet.
It's 125 feet.
Yeah.
And the silos that we're proposing here are 20 feet less than those, than that elevator.
Correct.
Elevator, right, yeah. And how many... There's going to be three silos?
Initially, with this initial phase of plant upgrades, we're only purchasing one 70,000-gallon silo. That's because we've evaluated the existing silos and, of course, money's always a concern. I would see us taking advantage of that as replaced silos in the future to continue on upsizing. Maybe, let's say, maybe two or three additional ones over the coming years. So effectively, you'd have that same look you have now with the row of stainless steel silos with potentially up to several of them growing by that amount in height.
Ma'am, Mr. ... Are those being replaced or added to?
This is an add. There are some older silos, tends to be like the smaller ones you see. They're a bit more degraded that are going to be replaced. But a number of the silos we're getting are not that tall because we're not going in the weeds, but pasteurized products condensed and creamed, it's not practical to have a silo that big because of how you rotate products and manage time in the silo. This is really for raw milk storage, to take a member of milk in at the volumes that we need to support the farmers.
Did you go through the same process with the grain elevator, Chip?
As far as I know, the Bordeaux Brothers grain... I know for a fact the Bordeaux Brothers grain elevator was a variance where the application came before the DRV at the time and asked for an exception to the rule in their case, and they received it. This would set up a process by which you...
Right.
The DRV would allow... would be allowed to consider your request and grant it if they see fit without having to seek a variance.
Yep.
Can I add one more? Ask one more question for you, Chip. So this is only going to take effect in the service industrial district?
Correct.
Nowhere else in St. Albans, other than the service industrial district?
Correct.
By the way, Tim, I was on the DRV when that Bordeaux Brothers got the variance.
So this is a public hearing portion. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any comments or concerns relative to this or additional information? Anyone on the council? Any other questions or comments? Maria, I know you work for it.
With that, yeah.
Okay, so we need you... Would like a vote, Chip, to... For the first reading?
Correct. Acceptance. And any other comments that the council has to consider?
Want to entertain a motion?
I'm moving that we accept the first reading of the amendment to height regulations in the service industrial district.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Kate. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So motion for first reading passes. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your questions. Chip, moving on to Steve, I believe.
Yes, I'm joined by Becca S. Jor of San Plano Housing Trust. We... Back in 2017, the city's council became the sponsor municipality of the CHT Home Loan Repair Program. To access Vermont Community Development Program funds, they have to go through a municipality. And it's a program that could be used by many households in the city. We saw the benefit of it. So the city council at the time approved that application. You might remember that earlier this year, we approved another application for the next round. But right now, the 2017 round is coming to an end. There's a required public hearing required by the grant program to just do an assessment in front of the legislative body or in front of the public in general about what was accomplished.
Sure. So we really appreciate your report. We projected completing 50 projects for low and moderate-income homeowners. Currently, we're at 46. I expect more than that to be completed in the next couple of weeks. And seven of those projects were in the city of St. Albans. And over 50 different contractors were hired to complete this project, totaling over $370,000 in rehab work. 266 households with low and moderate incomes received housing counseling services. So it's really a summary of what we've accomplished these two years.
Is it... Does it have to be owner-occupied?
No. We offer landlords who own single-family residence duplexes and accessory apartments. And it can also be an owner-occupied dwelling up to four units.
Could it be the commercial... Second story of a commercial building with housing on it?
I believe so, yeah.
How would they meet the income of those builder apartments?
The landlord doesn't, but the tenants do.
The landlord has to survey the tenants.
Yeah. So we actually have a separate income verification form for tenants.
And what are the requirements?
For the landlords, they have to agree to cut fair market rents for the term of the loan and then to keep renting it out to either the same tenant or ones who meet the income guidelines that are even or below.
80% of the payment for the grants in MSF?
Yeah.
Is it a permanent deed restriction?
No.
Only for the term of the loan?
Yeah.
So some of the money paid back goes away?
Yeah.
Landlords, if I'm not mistaken, also have the ability to tack the loan onto the sale of the property, right? Can they defer payment of the loan until they sell the property?
If they meet that requirement. So if they're... If they meet the same 80% guidelines, we could give them that.
And my recollection is that... Drill down a little bit on terms, if you would. I've taken some instances where it can be very, very competitive terms and...
Yeah, generally, interest rates range from 1% to 3%. APR, when you factor in closing costs, is generally a lot lower than your banker credit union because their closing costs are around $250, $250. We try to keep it affordable.
So your market-based rent requirement would prevent a landlord from using this to evict someone and get a higher rent?
Correct.
And you guys monitor that?
Yeah. And I will admit, we have not done a landlord loan yet. It's a new offering in the past two years. And it just... We've had some interest, but no one has yet applied.
Why do you think that? Is it because of the rent guidelines?
I think that's part of it. There's also a lot of restrictions that come with this money. So once somebody applies, we have to do an environmental review, which can take about at least 30 days. It's historic, then we have to do historic preservation. And then our contractors, they have to vet the contractors to make sure that we can pay them. It's not a quick process, so people who have the ability to go to a banker credit union may choose that option just because it's a little quicker, especially when their repairs are really immediate.
What does this mean for us, Chip? What does this cost us?
You know, we budget for assisting with opportunities like this. And I think there's a line in the P&amp;D budget called grant match. So, but in general, it comes out of the line in the budget that's for dealing with ad hoc things that come above... Come before the city that we want to take advantage of. And it's not a lot at all. It's not a lot of my time.
Like, give me... Give us a... For instance?
Probably $1,000 worth of my time over the course of a year.
So like an hour.
Would you say that preparing for these city council will allow hearings and making sure they're notified is probably the bulk of what you have to do?
Perhaps, yeah, exactly. But the rest is, you know, dealing with the grant side of things and the department and moving the grant requests back and forth.
And did you say we matched?
We do not... Well, actually, we do. I do tally up my time and it... No, we can actually charge. If it's enough, we can actually charge and get our money back.
I'd refrain it a little bit. We do budget for grant match, but those are when we're applying for grants that we can match. If anything, we make a little money on this deal because we can bill off Chip's staff time if it gets significant. But the main reason we're doing this is so that when we're banging people over the heads on public health and safety violations, we can get an offer and a way to get out of the hole.
And we're not financing anything. We're not matching anything. So there's no reason why we would not want to do this.
Yeah, this is no... Yeah, so it's not our money. It's just passing through. Yeah, it helps our people out.
With us here.
You said there were seven projects in St. Albans?
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about any of them?
A lot of them are roofs. So a lot of people got new roofs and water heaters in St. Albans.
I can put you in touch with one of the recipients who's happy to talk about it if you want. Someone you know.
And I will mention that this year, we did start offering $2,500 albergrains to all homeowners. So that has actually helped bump up our pipeline. So we were able to do a lot of small repairs when people couldn't afford a loan or didn't want to do that, so...
Just out of curiosity, household income limits, are those the same as BCDP?
Yes.
Those across the board?
Yeah.
And I don't know how often... These brochures we got around two years ago, they might have been outdated.
Yeah, they generally update income guidelines every year, so...
The most recent online... The online webpage has the most recent terms.
What do you need from us, anything, Tim? Or Chip?
Just an opportunity to hold a public hearing. That's it.
Anyone in the audience who would be willing to comment on this? You sure? Anyone?
Great.
All right, yeah. Tom, you're good. Marty, you're good.
All set for now.
Jeff, you're good. All right. Thank you, Chip. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
You too.
Chip, we're moving on to the Census Complete Count Committee.
Yeah, I know that members of the council have expressed an interest in making sure we count as many residents of the city as possible next year. One of the things the Census Bureau encourages is for municipalities to form a complete count committee where you can gather people together from, you know, from the municipality, from organizations that have a lot of contact with populations that might be hard to count or have ways of getting the word out. I haven't been able to put together a list of names for you, but wondering if the council might authorize the sort of assembly of a complete count committee? We could come back to you next month or in January... Sorry, back to... What month is it? January, February, before the count starts. What I'd like to do is involve some folks who either have, you know, places where folks come and might be able to have some pamphlets and other information about the Census Bureau and why it's important to fill out the forms. The library immediately comes to mind because this year will be the first time that you can fill the census out online. And it would be great if there are computer stations at the library are ready with information about the census and also, you know, letting folks know that it's a very short form in terms of other surveys you might fill out, that it is covered by Title 13 confidentiality, and that your responses are released for 72 years. And then they're released for the purposes of genealogy research. But in the meantime, it's, you know, it's really important for the city. I mean, I would recommend as staff that we do it, if only so that the city gets represented as strongly as it can in Montpelier whenever the state redistricts its legislative districts every decade when the results of the census come out. So I can think of a few folks who work for the city, perhaps even some city councilors who might want to be on the committee, but also other organizations that we partner with on a regular basis. I think it's just a matter of you're not meeting as much as just having a group, a network of folks to get the word out and find out who's been talking to folks about the census, who has questions. And it's a way to get back to the census operations in Vermont, even if we find out that there's a house that just hasn't gotten the postcard or someone who lives maybe in an odd apartment that it's hard to find. They haven't heard anything from the census. We could contact some folks and say, hey, look, there's someone else you could count right there. What's the process for making that happen?
I think this is great that we're being proactive about trying to make sure that everybody gets counted. I think it's really important for the representation and allocation of resources. And we're in a particular, probably unique to Franklin County, situation where we have... um, a more transient population, um, that's potentially getting undercounted. And I think if you look at the, the data from two thousand to two thousand and ten, I mentioned this last month, but I want to hammer it home for everybody else, that the idea that the city actually shrank in population in that decade is, doesn't really jive with what you see in other similar communities in our northwestern part of the state. So it, it leads me to think that perhaps people that live on, you know, those second and third story apartments or multi-unit places that are harder to, for a census taker to get in there and actually make sure that people get counted. Um, you know, we have more of those kinds of rental properties in the city, and I think we probably did get undercounted in the two thousand and ten census. And if we can just do a little public outreach and make sure that people know that it's time and are looking for that, um, it'll help us out a lot when we get to redistricting in, uh, twenty twenty-one.
I would, um, we talked about computer. I think, uh, adult learning is putting in a computer lab for other purposes, but they may be open to allowing individuals to participate. So you need nothing from us, Chip? Just maybe our, um, support for creating the committee and moving forward at this time?
You have a D and B here. You have D and B here.
You could, you could make a resolution to a staff and, and charge staff with, with putting one together. I mean, it lends some weight to it, a little bit of official pomp and circumstance.
And that would be a short-lived, right? It would be a...
It would pretty much wind down by the time twenty twenty's over, yeah.
All right, I'll move that we establish a twenty twenty Census Complete Count Committee.
Well, second.
Second, February. Further discussion? Any other questions of Chip? Hearing on, all those in favor of establishing the committee, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion passes? So you'll record back in January, Chip?
Yep.
And now you're looking.
Let's just, uh, next item is a quick resolution to, uh, authorize the city manager to accept a grant for the brownfield remediation across the street, specific to the Maiden Lane housing buildings.
Can you elaborate on the grant?
This grant is from the State Brownfield Revitalization Fund. It's paired with a loan that the city council's already authorized the acceptance of, but they want us to specifically address the grant as well. And it will go toward helping us with the soil, urban, urban soil remediation costs on the site that are underneath the two apartment buildings that'll go on Maiden Lane.
Any really nasty strings attached to this one, Chip?
No more so than normal. Typical stuff.
I'll move that we authorize acceptance of the ACCD Brownfields grant for Congressman.
Second.
One quick, why now, Chip?
This, um, particular grant did take a while to get underwritten and, uh, to just dot all the i's and cross all the t's. We, uh, you know, we, we knew we were going to receive this funding a few months ago, but it's, it's taken a while to fulfill all the conditions that, um, that get assigned to it. Now we're finally at that, you know, the last hump to get over and, um, do some of these final steps before we can sign it. Um, it will reimburse costs that, we have an agreement to reimburse costs as of October first. So even though we're, we're only accepting the grant now, it will help with costs that we've already incurred on the site.
Was it included in the original pro forma or was it?
Yes. Yeah, it was paired in the, in the NRPC State Grants and Loans line of that sources and uses that you were presenting with back in August, I believe.
Any other questions for Chip? And entertain a motion. While we get the motion, uh, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing on, motion passed. You need signatures?
We got one certainly. There's one, there's one around already.
All right. Thank you.
Is that it for you, Chip?
That's it for me.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your work.
Can you grab that?
I will.
Okay, next on the agenda, moving to, uh, item number six, local option tax. And with us tonight is Jeff Carr from Economic and Policy Resources for his second monthly visit.
Yes, and even though the weather isn't great, it's a lot better. Although I will thank the council, um, driving thirty-seven miles in that crap last month. I re polished my winter driving skills. And I was way ahead of the curve going back.
I would like to point out that, uh, Marty Manion has, uh, has done a wonderful job getting the streets cleaned tonight.
Well, actually, they were great. It was the interstate that wasn't.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. And the sidewalks got swept a couple of times while we were here.
You noticed, yeah?
Well, I'm a former, we're covering locally elected officials in the town of Essex on the select board, so um, colors of police cruisers and public works trucks and things like that, that I've noticed. My wife looks at E R, I'd say, only somebody who used to be on the select board would notice that.
So Jeff, we had you back because we wanted, uh, additional information for the council?
We've done a little, we've done some more work, um, on the local option tax. And just to remind the question, um, shall the council of the city of St. Almond's, um, request a charter change to be able to levy a one percent local option tax in the sales tax? You know, those rooms and alcohol, and have the state administrator go through the state administrative program where they take five dollars ninety-five cent per document cut, plus they get thirty percent off the top. So you're left with that. Um, and so just what we would be doing, alcohol and beverages, the state taxes ten percent.
Can you back up and show, so the amount is cut thirty percent off the top?
Yeah, the state takes thirty percent. You get seventy percent.
To make that at some point?
Um, uh, so the state alcohol beverage tax is ten percent. Uh, if you were to go with a local option tax on meals, rooms and alcohol, local option tax, it's almost will be eleven percent. Uh, the meals tax, it'd go from the nine, plus you'd get one percent, it'd be a ten percent tax. And the rooms tax is, which is nine percent statewide, you would add a percent, so that would be a ten. So it'd be ten, ten, eleven versus, um, nine, nine, ten. And the sales tax, uh, state sales tax, six percent. If you put a one percent St. Almond's local option tax without that, it'd be a seven percent sales tax for all sales. Estimation oriented, happening within, uh, the city of St. Almond's. Um, the use tax isn't part of the local option tax. Everybody know what the use tax is?
What does that get applied on? I was wondering that.
Well, what happens is, is that if you go to Manhattan and buy your
Okay.
Uh, fifty-eight screen, flat screen TV, when you come back and put it in service in Vermont, you're supposed to forward to the state, they're six percent.
And you use it in Vermont?
Yes, that's a use tax. That's what, even though you didn't acquire it here, you bring it back and use it in Vermont. So that's what they call a sale of use tax.
They do that every time.
Well, because of my, yeah, that's true. Because of my position.
Alcohol's not cheaper in Manhattan.
That's a policy.
You know that. Be true.
Because I, uh, of my position in my other life at state government, I was one of the two dozen people that would fill out the use tax for my income tax return too. Until the state gave you the option of doing one percent of your, or paying one percent of your income, otherwise save your slips. Um, and it also doesn't include the sales tax on vehicles, which is motor vehicle purchase and use tax. And again, the city already has the ability to tax some things, just like the city of Burlington and city of Rockland, you just haven't done it. Uh, with the exception of there's a little money that comes in from alcohol sales, um, but it's not a lot. What is it, a hundred, ten thousand dollars?
Uh, it's about nineteen. It's been growing, actually.
Actually. Uh, so if you go in this direction, you would forsake that. Um, and actually, the revenue numbers I haven't taken, the nineteen I just considered to be meaningless, I took. The thirty percent state cut and the partial tax out. Um, but if we refine, do another version of refining the revenue estimates, we would probably take whatever we think that the current tax will be, which would be like nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, just a quick question. So we, uh, some of the council folks has had discussions, with vendors concerned about, it does not touch on any services, correct?
Um, well, uh, there are some services that are in, uh, the sales tax, like people pay, uh, sales tax on their cable bills and utility bills. So, you know, it's not all just on goods. It's whatever is covered by the state sales tax, which does include some of those services.
I think that was the biggest question that some people brought up was, are there anything, is there anything that is not currently charging the state sales tax that would suddenly be taxed and create a new administrative program?
No, it's, it mirrors the state tax. It's just layered on top of what the state does. So if the state changes, your local option tax would change. It would mirror whatever the state does. And we are considering, in the consideration of this, we're talking about having the state administration on it so that we wouldn't have to do anything locally if you decided to go forward with this. We would let the state, who is very good at administrative taxes, administer it for you. Um, we did send a, uh, list of businesses that, um, that the, the city staff provided to us to the tax department. Um, we didn't hear back in a couple of weeks, so we inquired again about three or four days ago. So we haven't heard back on the master list of businesses yet. Uh, we were kind of hoping that we would by this meeting, but we haven't yet. And it just, you know, the tax departments got their hands full this time of year doing administration and those kinds of things. And so we expect that we'll hear back on, on that. Um, and what that is for is that if you go on the department's website, you will see that they have, uh, sales and taxable sales and, uh, taxable meals, taxable alcohol. They do not report taxable room rents. And the reason for that is there's less than ten taxpayers in the city. So they can't because of confidential, sorry, I have, I have a cold that I'm getting over. Um, and so I apologize. So when we did the revenue forecast, we used just the taxable sales we knew. And we now know that we have a fairly significant room length provider that's in the city now. We also know that there have been changes in the state assessment of the rooms tax to include Airbnb and those types of providers. So we hope that we get to the point where there's more of that kind of provider so we can get that data. But I just wanted you to know, when we do did the meals, rooms and alcohol, we only included meals and alcohol. We didn't have rooms. So our revenue estimate is likely light for the matter of rooms. So we probably gave you a conservative number, but we wanted, anyway, we didn't want to give you a high number.
Jeff, you might have mentioned this and I may have missed it, but going back to the use tax, is that a little bit e-commerce?
No. E-commerce involves, uh, providers like Amazon affiliates and those kinds of things, and that's been expanded. That was part of the Supreme Court decision called the Quill decision, where the Supreme Court articulated what the appropriate nexus was for owing, um, uh, sales that were e-commerce based sales by people who were located out of Vermont, but were making those sales to people who lived in Vermont. And so the tax department, after the Quill decision, also, just prior to the Quill decision, actually entered into an agreement with some of the larger providers like Wayfair, Amazon, uh, to remit, to collect and remit sales tax because it was one of those things that was identified as being unfair. As a matter of fact, higher than the Quill decision that prior to this. Wayfair, which was the subject of the, went around promoting that you don't have to pay sales tax if you buy from up. Which created an unfair playing field between what Wayfair was selling and the bricks and mortar refounders that were located in the communities. Now that's changed. And actually, sales tax, because it had been a declining, bricks and mortars had been a declining part of the equation, sales tax actually was pretty flat, even declining in some places. And now it's actually, we're covering more of the transactions that are actually happening and it's been modernized for e-commerce. And sales tax actually has been growing, which is a good thing because it's a hundred percent dedicated to funding education expenditures. I mean, no educational expenditures have been doing this.
While we're talking about the e-commerce, um, one of the, the things...
We're eating free.
He found that in his seat.
On forums.
I don't like it at all.
One of the questions I had was, um, if the local option tax is really, whether it's being charged by those e-commerce providers is about the zip code of the, the customer? And if so, if some city residents are already paying, the St. Almond's town local option tax is going up, but then going to the town and not coming back to the city, if that's what's...
You're missing revenue.
If so, we're...
Absolutely.
We're missing revenue. So, so I, if I buy something on Amazon, really, it's going to be Stephanie, but if, if, um, if I buy something on Amazon, uh, I am probably paying a seven percent tax, but instead of the city getting a local option.
It depends on the tax department. And, and part of the reason for sending them the list of our businesses is to give them familiarity because there are town part, that are in the same zip code as the city, is to get some clarity on that. And that would give them additional information to make sure that the affiliates, wherever they are, or where it's being reported by Amazon itself and the other providers, you know, um, Netflix is a big provider.
Can you tell that, Mike, by looking at your bill?
I, you know what? I, I have to, I have to say, like, it makes me want to do it now, so I was...
You can and you should. You can and you should because Amazon affiliates are charged with collecting the appropriate amount of sales tax based on where the sale is.
I mean, that would be like, uh, Georgia has oh zero five four seven eight, some of Swanton is, uh, up on two oh seven and zero five four seven eight. I mean, there's...
Yeah, if they went to local option taxes, there would be some issues there.
But with, if they're paying, if they're buying something on Amazon, couldn't they be, be hit with this tax?
How do you decipher what's in the city and what's not based on one?
That's why we're allowing the state to administer. They have the responsibility for doing that. And of course, we would, if you were to go in this direction, the town staff would spend time with them, making sure that they were getting it right. And in particular, when we talk about the residents, when we talk about cable bills, and we talk about liquor bills and things like that, you want to make sure they're doing it right too, because you don't want your tax going to the town any more than the town wants their tax going to you. If you were to go forward with this.
Can you just clarify one moment? So when you first opened up, you talked about tax on cable, phone?
Whatever's subject to the sales tax.
So I don't pay...
State sales tax is what governs, what can be subject to the local option.
I don't pay much attention, but natural gas?
Yeah.
Uh, oil, if someone's...
I don't know if oil is or not. I can't remember. I haven't had oil in a really long time, so I haven't seen the bill in a really long time. I don't think he oil is. I think peaty oil has its own tax. It's a gross receipts tax, so I don't think it's subject to the sales tax by the state. So whatever is subject to state sales tax would be subject to a local option tax if we were to go forward with this. What's ever subject to the state meals, rooms and alcohol sales tax. It's a, it's a, meals, rooms and alcohol tax operates like a sales tax would be subject to the local option assessment in the city. And there are all sorts of things whenever you go in this direction that you have to do administratively. The interesting thing is, is if you look at the town, since the town surrounds the city, you see this big area on the map that's subject to a one percent local option sales tax on local option meals, rooms and alcohol tax. And you get to the city and it's a clear thing, it only has the alcohol tax and it's only, you know, partial tax. So when you think about it, and, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the memo done until today. You look at other competing commercial centers. City of Burlington has local option tax, two percent points. They charge it in the gross receipts like the city of Rockland does, as we call it. City of Manouski is local option tax. Town of Colchester is local option tax. City of South Burlington, local option tax.
So for those listening...
Town of Williston, local option tax. All the places where people might compete with providers in the retail area and in the meals and rooms area with the city, already assess it. I don't think it gives you a big advantage not to assess it, but I think what it says is, is that the concern that the merchants might have about how this one percent might affect purchasing behavior probably isn't going to be as significant as if you were there all by yourself. purchasing behavior probably isn't going to be as significant as if you were there all by yourself. And in the scheme of things, the experience is, is that it hasn't affected things. It's not enough to motivate behavior. Whether it cumulatively does something over time is another issue and nobody really knows on this. But if you talk to almost any community that's put it in, you find very few people that say that it results in dramatic changes in purchasing behavior.
Can you just clarify how many throughout the state there are?
Yes. Fifteen municipalities impose a local sales, local option sales and use tax. Seven impose only a meals and room stack, alcohol only, and fifteen have both.
And what are the sizes of those, Jeff? From?
The United States Valley?
Yeah. From a low of what to a high of, well, we know Burlington, but.
Well, the town of Stratton, which is like, fat and few than a thousand people have it, but they have a export, they can export the cost of that because they have a lot of visitors. Town of Stowe has it. Town of Stowe is under three thousand people. The City of Burlington, which is forty to fifty thousand people has it. The City of South Burlington, which is about maybe fifteen to seventeen thousand people, has it. Town of Williston, which is about fifty-five hundred people, has it. City of Manouski, I don't know, what are they, about ten or twelve thousand? Something like that. They have it. If you go down the state farther, you'll see places like Manchester have it. Let us scary, it's kind of Killington has it, obviously, for the fiscal area.
Woodstock?
I don't think Woodstock does. I don't think Woodstock's on the thing. I hand it out on map.
Yeah.
Brattleboro, Mount Kiliger, Berry City.
Berry City has it. And Berry City went through quite a discussion about it, about imposing. And actually, part of the reason that we're conservative is that Berry City messed up their forecast and overestimated it. And it didn't come in anywhere near for it. So we were very careful in, in what we did. And we think that the number that we provide, and we did, we did this chart here, which is what if sale, local option sales and use and local option meals, rooms and alcohol were in place over the last thirteen, some odd thirteen, fourteen years? That, this is what the revenue take would have been. You see the numbers kind of go up and down a little bit, but if you look from about sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, three quarters baked in. We don't have what they call 180-day data yet for the April to June quarter of 2019. That's coming out soon, obviously, coming out after December 31st. But we think about eight hundred fifty-five thousand is baked in. If you had had the local option tax in place in fiscal year nineteen, or the year ending June 30th of nineteen, you would have gotten about eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in local option taxes from the sources. And again, the meals, rooms and alcohol is really just meals and alcohol. It doesn't include rooms yet. And that part of your base, which is very small, is now growing because of, because of the provider that you have in town now that you're an equity owner. So you'd also be taxing a business that affects your equity ownership in that facility if you were to go forward with this. And if we look at, if we look at what's happened, this is actually a 2.9% growth rate. That's 1.9% minus 1% to point. That's the, the 10-year growth rate for sales and use. And the 19-year, nine, excuse me, it's not a 19, it can't be, it's a 13-year growth rate. Minus 1% is 2.6% for that. Sorry for the, sorry for the typo, we have like 13 years of data there. So we use that to say, okay, what if we took this out 30 years old, we're giving you 10 years worth of data here? This is what you could expect with the long-term growth rates in for sales. And for those rooms and alcohol, you can see that eight fifty-five is 19. This is the year that we're in. This is what we do at long-term that we use. When we do long-term projections, when we go out 20 or 30 years, we use long-term growth rates. We know that there are cycles in the economy and there's good years and there's bad years. And we don't try to estimate when there's going to be good years and bad years. We just know, we get 20 and 30 years out into the future, that this is what the trend is. This is what the long-term trend is. We're in the process of building a sources and uses model for the staff. If you decide that you want us to keep going, we'll refine it. And we'll actually put in real projects into this for the uses. And we'll develop three scenarios for revenues for you. We think this is one scenario, which is the long-term growth rate minus 1%. We think the, another scenario would be the long-term growth rate. And then we think a third scenario is going to be in these gray shaded areas. If there's going to be a downturn in the business cycle, it's going to be during those two years, given what's going on, because our expansion is now the longest in history. It's pretty safe and secure over the next six, nine, 12 months. But when we get out into fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, there's an opportunity for it to go down. And what we would do is develop a scenario where we look at the Great Recession, which happened back in, if we look at the past history, happened back in fiscal year 2007 and 2008. You can see those negative numbers there. It was a great recession for the country, but it wasn't our great recession in Vermont or in New England. Our great recession actually happened 1989 to 1992. We actually had a much milder recession than the nation did as a whole, with an anti-national economy without any of the Great Recession. But we would build in the third scenario, in those gray shaded areas, some diminution in the revenue receipts for a recession. Because we could, we feel pretty confident that we're going to have a downturn somewhere in that. And over the 30 years that we did this, and we did this for 30 years, because that's the longest period of amortization for bondback. Because we're recommending that if you go forward with this, that the predominant use of the local option tax revenue monies be in capacity building activities, like recreational assets, assets that build the amenities of the community so that you're using that money to make your community even more attractive and your infrastructure put in even better shape. So it continues to attract people in the community. So that this gives you a mechanism where you can take those non-residents that come in and patronize the businesses and actually get them a more direct way of supporting the quality of your infrastructure and the amenities, which then comes a self-reinforcing cycle. And we're proposing, after discussions with the staff, that 90% of the proceeds be used for that. 5% could be set aside to help low-income families with some of the programs that the city has, for example, help them afford the recreational programs. And then I know Dom had sent you a memo on Friday, which said we should set aside 5% for undesignated fund balance building for when we go through periods like in the gray, where if you look at the last recession, which wasn't the worst that we've had, where revenue receipts between these two sources actually declined about 22 and a half percent. So we would build in a recession scenario on that. Which argues for doing this as fast as you can before the recession comes, so you can start to build that, that undesignated balance to deal with anything if the economy turns out, how it might affect your local tax revenues. Or you can management on the sales, on the use side, and maybe not issue the debt, you know, in 2021, like you're thinking about for the recreational asset that you're sharing with the town in the sidewalks project that Dom and the staff have talked about, that we've got the numbers for. And actually, when we started to put this thing together, you still have quite a bit of capacity, even with the 5% 5% in those two projects, to do more infrastructure work from the standpoint of servicing the debt. And remember, these numbers would be used to service the principal and interest on debt issuance. It'd be a dedicated funding source. We think, you know, if you were, Town of Williston, for example, just uses local option tax revenues to support salaries of people in certain departments. Not recommending you do that. Because if you can continue to build the revenue generating capacity of the downtown, this will be a self-reinforcing mechanism for you to take the next step, you know, the TIF program. And I think as Dom pointed out last time, if you look at the numbers, we're talking about potential numbers here. That could be about half to maybe 60% of your TIF program going forward. I know it's a lot to swallow, but we've been doing a lot of thinking about this and a lot of how this would make it a reasonable project, a reasonable policy for you. And there's decision points, but I know there's more questions.
I just have a curiosity on that chart you just looked at. You had a significant drop in FY11, room and meals from 70 to 22,000.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be just some data issues for the tax department. Again, we need to go back to them and make sure that the data that they're reporting is reasonable and best. After they get the business list, they may go back and rewrite a lot of this data historically. No, I think that that, the numbers the last four years, for example, for sales, are pretty good numbers. And I think the reason why I think they're kind of legit is it kind of coincides with what you've been doing in building your downtown. And I would have expected that to happen. The meals and alcohol taxes, you could have, you could identify 11, that 22,000 could be an anomaly. But that's what they were reporting on their website. And so we wanted to use the tax department data on that. And clearly, the meals and alcohol are part of this.
And did we decide what set on the grant list was?
Excuse me, sorry.
About the actual dollars?
One, one penny on the tax rate?
Yeah.
I think it's about 60 grand, Tom?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
So, you know, eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars is a lot of cents. I mean, rams.
I thought you were going to do that in your head for a minute.
Well, I was there, he just jumped in too quick.
Some, some of that will be paid by residents. But some of it will also be paid by people who aren't residents that come in and patronize the downtown. This is a way to get the users to pay more directly to the manager. Because the way that you get the money previous to that is if they go to the businesses, patronize the businesses, the businesses are able to pay their property taxes. It's an indirect mechanism. And there's a reason why Stowe's and Stratton's and Wind Hall's and, and, and those types of people have these things is because they're able to charge the users for using the amenities of the community. Otherwise, you have to rely on an indirect mechanism, which is fine, which is okay, if that's what we decide that you want to do. But the feeling was that if you wanted to maintain the momentum that you generated with the TIF program, this is the next logical step. Without, without a lot of big downsides, considering that it's a well-worn path among lots of communities and lots of your competitors.
I would say, I would also add that my belief is the burden isn't just shared by those coming in to visit. It's shared by renters as well.
That's true. And workers, your day population is very large here. But renters are residents too. They're indirect taxpayers.
No, I get, I get that.
Yeah. And owners are obviously residents as well. And business people are absolutely important, you know, and I, there will be concern expressed by the people who are going to be responsible for adding this to the bills, collecting it and sending it to the city. There are folks who will be philosophically opposed to this in the community. But there will be, also be people who recognize the value of quote-unquote user charges. The consumption function is a discretionary tax. People choose to do it. So you don't have necessarily, you're not, what do they say? They're not exacting anything from anybody because they don't have any other choice. But the consumption function is voluntary expenditure.
Jeff, to that point, I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The same exemptions to the state sales tax, like on groceries, food, for instance, apply?
Clothing under $20. Yep. And, yep. And this, the state is part of what they call the streamlined sales tax initiative, which is an initiative by about two dozen states around the country. And what they do is, is they have, for the purposes of making it easier for people who have multi-state responsibilities to remit sales tax, we are part of a compact where we tax the same thing as those other states. And so whenever there's a discussion about expanding the list of items that are in our sales tax, that is always part of the equation. And we only do it if the other states move a lockstep with us. So it's not an easy thing to do, to change. But again, the whole thing is whatever the state does, if the city goes forward with this initiative, the city is on top of what the state already does. So you're not going to be doing something that's different than other people doing something that's different from the state. You're just adding a percentage point on the sale.
No administrative burden on, or there's no added administrative burden for?
You're going to have to figure out how to spend the money. And I know that's going to be hard for you.
These guys will have some good ideas.
Yes. I, I won't say to you that, the staff member that's been helping me on this, when he did the thing about using the pool, the initial estimate for the pool, initial estimate for the streets, he said, and then even with a 10% saying, there's a lot of money left over. They've got to spend it. I said, don't worry, they'll figure out a way to use their proceeds. I'm confident of that if they go forward with this, because there's so many things that have to be done, particularly in infrastructure.
And is there extra administrative burden on the business owner who is having to charge the tax?
Well, they have the extra weight of the extra money. But it's piggybacked. And, you know, they have to program their computers to add the 1% local. But it'll just change the amount of money that they spend. So.
You mean the amount of money they collect. The merchant will not have to spend any more money.
No, no. No, the, the user will have to pay a little bit more, but whether or not 1% is enough to change behavior, there isn't much evidence that it is.
And I ask that because I've been hearing from some people that this is, presents some sort of onerous burden on a small business owner to charge this tax.
If you were going down the road towards the capability that you have to do your own tax, that would be true. But if you're, since you're piggybacking on the state, there is none.
And with the, the alcohol piece, we'd actually be removing that burden if we just went in this direction.
Your own, your own thing. And you would need, obviously, to have charter language drawn up by the city attorney that would enable you to do the state program and you would probably eliminate your capacity to charge that. I mean, you don't have to. You could just say you won't do it anymore. But I just think from the standpoint of appearances and optics, you probably would want to do that. Because you wouldn't want to have the ability to layer it on top of that, which you would still have if you didn't take that out of your charter. It's been around since early 1900s, your ability to do that.
Has anyone ever retreated from charging an option tax?
Yes, Town of Killington did. Town of Killington assessed the sales tax and they repealed it, but they imposed the meals, rooms and alcohol. That's the only one that I know.
And you said that Berry, what did you say about Berry?
Well, Berry, Berry City went through a process where I don't think the people that did the revenue estimate understood all the nuances of what was involved. And they ended up overestimating the amount of revenue that was coming in. So they had a lot more uses than what the actual revenue when it came time to actually get the checks were. That's why we've taken a deliberately conservative approach. We think you'll get more than that amount of money. But we didn't, we wanted to make sure that we didn't build expectations of $950,000 when you only had $850,000. And, you know, the money is going to be what the money is. And there still is some work to be done to verify the business list with the, with the tax department. And if I was, if I was thinking clearly a month ago, I would have said, they're probably not going to get back to you for a little while on that, because they have other things that are going on. And it's a pretty labor-intensive thing to double-check these things, I think. But they have a topology where they put businesses in the town and businesses in the city. And they want to go through, and they were actually anxious. When you talked to them, I think they were pretty, but when I talked to them, they were very anxious to do this because they wanted to prove, you know, their data sets and prove the quality of them and get them correct. So these revenue numbers are still contingent upon the tax department checking, you know, the business list. But I can't, I find it hard to believe they could be really off.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, there are some decision points. Does the city want to do one or the other, or pursue both? You know, I know that the town staff is looking for, do you think it's worthy to continue to go down this road or not? Even if you say you could go down this road or not, you're making, not making an irreversible decision on this. You're just commissioning us to do more work. And I would volunteer to come in, I won't chart, even charge for it, I'll come up. If you want to do a workshop on this, I'll be glad to do a workshop on this with you. It wasn't part of the scope, but I want you to make the right decision and how it feels for you. I personally, look, I'm a, I'm a Snelling Republican, okay? For those who didn't remember Dick Snell, I worked for him for four years, just out of graduate school. He was governor of Vermont State Planning Office. I don't normally like taxes, okay, as a philosophically, but I just don't think, I think the benefits to you, you know, putting myself as a former sitting selectman in my town. You know, there's a reason that the Town of Essex, if anybody wants to know, didn't do local option tax. After I left, we actually went through the process of doing a local option tax. They actually got to the point where they developed all the paperwork and everything. And they had talked to the business community, and particularly, they focused on the itty-bitty machine company in my community, IBM. And they said, no, no, we're fine, no, no, we're fine, you know, we don't have any problem with it. Then they got to the point where they were gonna warn it at town meeting. All of a sudden, the IBM said no. And we couldn't figure out why. The only reason why the Town of Essex in my community didn't go forward with the local option tax is because then IBM was shrinking its manufacturing footprint. And electrical energy is exempt from the state's sales tax if it's used in the manufacturing, production. And what they were doing was, they were emptying their buildings, rehabbing them, and renting them out to People's Bank and for a, for a back office operation and those kinds of things. And all of a sudden, they realized that on rented space, they would lose the manufacturer's exemption for all their electricity purchases. And so they, all of a sudden, figured that out and opposed it. And we put, and the select board, I was sitting in the audience, I was glad I was sitting in the audience, rescinded the ballot item for local option tax, not at town meeting, the night before vote. So that's why town didn't do it. We had a very special circumstance with a major employer in town that would have lost its manufacturer's exemption on about half of its campus, we would have been renting our businesses.
On these two decision points, what's the?
The second decision point is what you're gonna use the money for? We think it should be capacity building. Is, do we have it about right to fund debt service, to improve the amenity base and the infrastructure and the opportunity to generate a rate of return? And the 5% set aside for low-income households and 5%, which I did pay up there, but 5% for the undesignedated fund balance portion? That seems to make sense. The third decision point would be that we go get language from the city attorney, unless the charter change would have to be for you to consider and potentially approve if you decide, approve if you decide to go forward. And then if you think that this is something that we should do, then probably pretty soon, we gotta start some outreach. The outreach, first part of the outreach is to the business community and the residents to talk about what this is all about. Then if there's a valid item and it passes, then there's a whole bunch of outreach about what does this mean and how are we gonna do it? We have to talk, at least in broad terms, about how we would do it now, but we wouldn't go through the specifics of developing the mechanisms and all those kinds of things until we got to the point where it made sense.
What was the timeline, what was the timeline before you get to town meeting day?
The town, the timeline on town meeting day would look a little bit like this, between mid-December and January.
Set me up pretty good, huh?
Yep. And you didn't even see this.
I didn't see that, no.
What we do is we go to the town attorney and get this done. There's a warning that has to be done before town meeting if you decide to do this. We've got some more research for you, which has developed financial models for staff about the sources and the uses, and we get agreement on the scenarios for the sources, but also the uses. We have to come to you with a policy. It can be as specific as you'd like, it could be as broad as you'd like, it could be latitude. Probably the more specific, the better for the vote. But that's a judgment call on your part if you want to go forward with this. Town meeting is March 3rd this year, the citywide vote. And then after that would be the, okay, we've done this, now how are we specifically gonna do it? And what's gonna be, you're gonna talk to business people, you're gonna talk to residents about this, about what's exactly gonna happen. And, you know, you've got, what, about eight or nine million dollar operating budget?
Ten, yeah.
Ten? This is eight or nine percent of that. That's the scope that you're talking about here. And so if you want me to stop, I'll stop. If you want me to keep going, I'll keep going until you tell me to stop or tell me you've got a proposal that you're willing to go to the voters with.
You talking in general or tonight?
All you gotta do is tell me what to do and I'll do it, and do the best of my ability.
So anyone on the council, do you have any questions for Jeff?
I like moving, if we move forward with this, I like the idea of you coming up and doing a session.
Okay.
Open to the public.
I'll even bring my staff up.
I like, I think that would be valuable, but that's just me. Questions, anyone? No? Okay. Jeff, I think we're good for tonight?
Yeah.
We will continue to discuss it under Don's report and.
He did a nice job with that memo, very, very.
Was it good?
You really understood it.
You think I sat in your chair before?
Thanks for coming up again and thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Yep. Good, go watch Eli like to. That's right. He's starting to turn his house. His spear up.
Can't do anywhere, turn it off. Okay, Don, we'll turn it over to you, you have a lengthy agenda.
So my, my report and action items flow very logically out of Jeff's report. I think, you know, what we're, the end game tonight, the big action item is item C under the manager report, the request to schedule the hearings for the charter amendment regarding the local option tax. So that's what we're building towards. So if you turn your packet to my memo, this subject line is town meeting day ballot items. And this is really the time to turn the ship towards town meeting day and begin to get organized. So there's five items that I'm aware of that are on the ballot. It's possible we could have a sixth item which we'll talk about at the end of the memo. First is the annual budget. The annual budget is coming together very nicely. I'm confident we can submit a budget proposal with an increase that is 1% on the tax rate or less and is consistent with the council's policy goals. So we haven't slashed anything. It also doesn't rely on any new revenues from a local option tax, nor does it fund any capital projects. So the budget that'll be going to the finance committee in the coming weeks continues everything we're doing now and it bounces between zero and one cent on the tax rate. One of the priority capital projects that we have discussed submitting to the voters is the neighborhood sidewalks project. And in your packet, there's a spreadsheet of what remains to be done. Circulated this to Public Safety Committee and to see if they saw any conspicuous submissions. But this is sort of the loose ends. These are the streets we weren't able to get to, or streets that got admitted that we realized we really ought to do, like Kirk Street. So the price tag on that's 1.5. I'm suggesting that we utilize local option tax revenues to complete those projects in 2020, till next summer, and that we propose it to the voters in March along with a local option tax proposal. Now, obviously, you could unbundle those, but they seem to be an obvious linkage based on the capacity building approach that we've been discussing. Second is the community, community pool. We've had a lot of discussion about this on the media, on Facebook. The city share of the pool is 2.7 million. In your packet's the latest site plan and rendering. Just for the record, it is 12 months of usage. It's not just a summer pool, it's the year-round pool located in Hardak. Debt service on that's 157 a year. And I would suggest we consider that that be funded via the local option tax as well. So both of those capital projects could be done without raising the property tax if we adopt the local option tax. The third, the fourth item is the Kenyon Street street state. That's a TIF-funded project. We're ready to go on that project in the 2020 construction season. The TIF will pick up $800,000 of that and water-based water funds will service $300,000. That's not something that we're proposing for the local option tax and it wouldn't raise the property tax rate. The fifth item is the charter amendment regarding the local option, as we've been discussing. And I think it's worth taking a look at the local option draft policy. Jeff referenced this a couple of times. But this is a short, simple policy that I think captures some of the discussions we've been having. Recognizes a revenue stream that's north of $800,000. Has some findings that our services should be funded by diverse revenue streams, not just the property tax. And that we must continue our investment in neighborhoods, the central business district, recreation, and public safety. And that by diversifying our revenue streams, it allows us to reduce the cost of recreational programming for those on fixed incomes. At the bottom of the page, we have some policy guidelines which recognizes that the voters have a chance to approve all of this via the city budget. That the entire intent and purpose of this program is to reduce pressure on the property tax. This is not an additional tax proposal. This is intended to reduce pressure on the property tax by diversifying that revenue stream and allowing us to continue to make the investments that we also enjoy making. And it has three automatic set of stats. 5% to reduce the cost of programming to vote for the disadvantage, 5% for a rainy day fund, and 5% to replenish the redevelopment fund.
Just an FYI on that, in conversation with councilperson Spooner, he was, in hindsight, might have seen that 5% for disadvantage to 7.5%. Just FYI.
You found that in?
He found it in me.
Okay. Procedurally, we need to warn, we have to have two hearings on the charter change. And it's a very weird, unique section of law that says we have to warn those hearings between December 24th and January 3rd. Not a great time to notice a meeting, but it's a box check that we have to make. So one of the decision points tonight, probably the most important one, is can we warn the first, can we warn those hearings, we probably schedule both of them and get that out over the holidays?
So if we warn those hearings, we can get feedback from the public? And really, at the end, if we, then we can make a decision after those hearings whether it's actually on a ballot in March?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the, that's, that adjustment is specifically contemplated in the statute. I would suggest that one of the workshops that Jeff was proposing be one of those hearings.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, the other item that I referenced in passing, we have an opportunity to redevelop a portion of the Fonda site with a local employer who was looking to leave and is interested in expanding on-site. So there might be an additional warning items to clean up, do the environmental radiation on a portion of the Fonda site. So there could potentially be six items on the, on the ballot. We'll know more about that towards the end of this week.
Would that mean local option tax, bringing, so you're gonna make that happen?
Thanks, Mike, that's a TIF-funded project. So.
Which, I would just share, that has green dollars associated with it with northern borders already.
Yeah, there's $400,000 in hand for that project. So this essentially matches, matches that 400 with another similar amount from the TIF. All of these projects are, I think, tracked very closely right back to the goals and objectives we set at the beginning of the year and the direction we've been pursuing for a couple of years now. So that's item A through C on the manager report. And welcome any questions, discussion, ultimately a motion if you're so inclined.
I would just like to share that. I think myself and the council together agree that's a lot. And I think you, you have said the same, Don.
Yeah.
But at the same time, a lot of it is in desperate urgency to make, you know, we don't know how much longer the pool is gonna last. The business you referred to is ready to act now. You know, the local option tax as well. So timing is of the essence. It's not our ideal scenario to have that much on the ballot in March. But based on timing, it's something we almost have to do.
I agree with that. You know, I think we have a track record of laying out a vision and a plan and communicating that with the voters and giving them the opportunity to weigh in and say yes or no.
So do we schedule those hearings tonight or?
I can figure out the logistics of it, I just need you to say it's okay to schedule them.
I move that we, that we authorize the city manager to schedule two, two hearings, correct? For the charter amendment regarding the local option tax.
Second then.
Motion by Jim, second is by Mike. Any other questions for Don on that? Comments?
I have a question under, under discussion. Maybe it's a separate item, but. Maybe we can, can we circle back to that draft policy and discuss? Because I think we're quickly gonna be at a point where we need to, in noticing it, have something to talk about in that hearing and lay out sort of the draft program for, that we would have a hearing on. So we'll come to that in a second. But there's motion on the table, I just wanted to introduce that discussion before it's over with.
And we also have to take a look at the fact that we might not have a partner with the pool.
Right.
So something depends on what happens with the town too on that. So the pool may, may, may or may not be, so.
Good point. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the hearings, public hearings on the charter amendment. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. How do you want to progress? Anything else on that, Don?
What's the council's sentiments on the third bullet? Do you want to go to seven, seven and a half on that?
Seven and a half puts it somewhat in line with what we've been doing to subsidize the pool, right? I mean, it gets it into that. I mean, it gets it into that $70,000, $80,000.
Did you do that?
I did that math, yeah. I'm saying that as a statement. No, it sounds kind of, but.
What do you mean by subsidize?
My understanding from Dom's comments at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we've been basically subsidizing the operation of the pool and making it low to no cost for a lot of events.
You know, we put about a -- historically, the vision has been that recreation be funded by user fees to the greatest extent possible. We, on average, put about $100,000 into recreation across the board. Sometimes that's the pool itself, sometimes it's broader recreation programming, depending on the weather, depending on the programs. Generally, it's about $100,000 is the general fund investment. I don't think Chad was seeking to have this replace that $100,000. I think he would like us to go further and take a look at the recreation program offering and figure out how we can reduce barriers for disadvantaged populations.
That's what he wants to do.
But there's nothing in what we're doing that limits our ability to do that at any time.
Correct, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think he was just trying to -- all of this, I think, just kind of creates some directional navigational beacons, right, that reflects the intent, which is ultimately implemented through the annual budget.
So when I do the rough math, the debt service on the two items, the sidewalks and our half of the pool if the pool moves forward, is a big chunk of the kind of revenue projections if we decided to go with both things on the local option tax, but the vast majority of it we'd be able to use for stabilization and property tax stabilization, right?
Correct. The round number, I think, in the projections is 850, and it's, you know, 70 and 160, so.
Right, so, I mean, my -- what I said last time was if we're going to go with LLT, buying down the property tax rate and getting that stable for the next, you know, for the couple of years is a huge motivator to do that, to reduce that pressure, and that sounds like what's in your policy proposal. You know, we get those amenities with a chunk of it, but, you know, it's also combined with the ability to do all of that stuff without having to increase the property tax rates. As far as work, as far as the city's concerned? Right?
Yeah.
As far as the state portion? Am I correct in saying that?
What do you mean by the state portion?
Well, our reliance on the property tax, not the school reliance.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there's $600,000 that remains undesigned under this policy and the estimates.
I was going to add that. If you just took the debt service on those two, the 3, 15 or 17 and a half percent, you're still going to have a quarter of the money remaining, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's not crazy that there's a million bucks within the next few years that's flowing in from the local option tax. We're at 850 now on conservative, very conservative assumptions that don't include the hotel.
Or, I mean, frankly, the way that the policy's been being in the state, Airbnb, people doing short-term rentals, those are going to come into the mix. I mean, that is, that started in 2018, and next year, the Congress, the chair of the Congress committee's got a bill he's looking at that's going to increase the number of folks who are actually registered that are doing that, sites actually collecting meals and rooms tax, so. Well, we don't want Curry's budget hindered by what we're doing either, because Dom and I were talking earlier about the liquor tax flows through her office, right? And without that now, that money's not going into our office. But we're going to budget it.
Yeah.
We're going to budget it for.
So we can make sure there's a whole harmless provision there. There's no way that -- there's no way we're collecting it as well as the state tax department will collect it. And so what is now 19, I think, is going to go up when we have the experts in the business collecting it, and ours is largely self-reporting, so.
So she'll be better off?
Yeah, yeah.
Her office will be better off.
So if I have a concern when we talk about the levelization of the budget, so there's no increases, is that when you read the paper, we're looking at an education tax where they're predicting not a 6 cent increase, but a 6% increase on the education debt. I think we would have to work hard to educate our voters that we're talking two different budgets, and I know we take the heat when there's just a across-the-board increase because we're the ones on the front line more often than not. So I think we would have to work really hard. If we're going to stick to our guns and say, look, we're going to keep the existing budget where it's at, then when they see it go up, then we need to.
We never do a good job doing that. We never do a good job doing that because everyone always looks at us and says, you said it wasn't going up. You said it wasn't going up. And to have to educate somebody to say, look, it's not us. We're not doing it.
We need to keep that in consideration as we move forward.
Yeah. I mean, with that kind of pressure on the statewide property tax, that's exactly why we should be looking at this option.
I believe we have a motion on. Did we vote on that? We voted on it.
So the motion's to amend at 7.5?
Oh, right.
My question is, and then can we -- I'd like to treat this as, you know, kind of as first reading level acceptance that this is what we'll use to put the discussion in play and as we're explaining to, you know, what we're talking about, that we'll reference this policy. Is that okay?
And there could be some fluidness to it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yep, okay. So we've decided that's a motion?
Please.
Entertained a motion to do.
So I move that we recommend adopting the policy guidelines as the first presentation of, for the first hearing, the uses for the local option tax as presented with the addition of 7.5% of the reserves of the local option tax revenues for reducing the cost and increasing access to recreation programming for disadvantaged and fixing home folks.
I might just suggest instead of addition.
Or unnamed with the amendment. So it was already in there at 5, and it's 7.5%, thanks.
Second by Jim, motion by Mike, seconded by Jim. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Dom, moving on to Greg Brown, financing, lodge financing.
The proposal in your packet, as you recall, Hardak Inc. is leading the fundraising charge of their ground lodge. Project budget is $750,000. They have $400,000 in hand and are committed to raising the additional $350,000. They have asked us to finance that $350,000 for three years while they continue with their fundraising efforts. That allows the lodge to be finished, allows us to use the lodge for programming and generate revenues, and they will pay the interest in the meantime at 3% or less. Ultimately, the debt remains with Hardak Inc., doesn't pass through to any personal liability of their board, but it remains Hardak's liability that they're committed to retire over the three years. Doesn't become a city obligation except indirectly.
Yeah, so this is about cash?
It's about cash and saying, let's finish it, and then let's pay it off. It's very similar to what we did with Rotary with the fountain.
When we did Rotary, was that a bond?
Yeah, our cash position was not as strong then as it is now, so we're able to cover this through internal borrowing and our -- what's the word I'm looking for, Tom? And our short-term credit relationships with the bank.
Can we get a favorable interest rate? Why not?
We even borrowed cheaper than anybody else. And these guys are saying, let's partner. You use your strengths, which is borrowing and providing that administrative ballast, and we'll use our strengths, which is filling troughs and fundraising for a community asset. And at the end of it, we'll give it to you guys. I think that's a pretty good deal.
Make a motion to approve the Greg Brown Lodge financing request. I was outlining in the memorandum.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No opposition, motion passes. Moving on to a similar conversation regarding the Ballet Studio for redevelopment.
Yes. Ballet Studio is seeking to amend their existing loan with us for $100,000 by adding an additional $50,000 to it and lengthening the term by one year. We've used a similar financing arrangement for the project. It's some unexpected developments with their construction timeline and materials. They've been a good partner with the city, and we'd like to help bring this practice to fruition.
Just to make sure the viewing public understands that Vermont Ballet is the building on Steben Street that was recently torn down and has been rebuilt. A lot of, I field a lot of questions about what's going on there, and I have to tell them that, and everyone goes, oh, really? That's a great idea. But that's where it's located, on Steben Street. So that'll make the motion that we increase the loan amount to, pub a bakery or Vermont Ballet to $150,000 and extend the term to 2024. Authorizes the city manager to draw the appropriate documents.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? I would just like to augment what Tim said, and that is they've done a great job down there. I think when completed, it'll be a great asset for the city, not just for ballet, but for, for meeting space and a variety of other things. So I think it's going to be a great addition to the downtown, not to mention the number of folks we'll draw to the downtown area.
We're going to have a satellite meeting there some night.
Yeah, no, it's my first class. I did a great job, or have done a great job. So any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to abstain because of a personal relationship with borrowers.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes to expand the loan to Mary Ellen and Troy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Two final items here. Item F authorizes the recording of a mortgage on the land at Congress and Main for $150,000, which is a condition of a grant from the Mont Housing and Conservation Board that was received by the lawyers this morning, distributed to the council electronically, and is at your place as well.
I'll move that we authorize a mortgage on the land of Congress and Main for $150,000 of each senior grant.
Second.
Questions or comments? Clarifications needed? If not, motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to G, Dom.
There's this notion in public finance called a declaration of an official intent that gives you a 60-day lookback period, which allows you to look back and grab any expenses in the previous 60 days. They call these pyramid resolutions because but for these, in theory, you could refinance the pyramids. So the bond issuers require adoption of a declaration of official intent, and the lookback provision kicks in on Section 1, and this allows us, so we do it early in the process, it allows us to reach back and grab all of our expenses for the engineers, architects, and professional services that are leading up to the bond.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the declaration of the officialment of the pool.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Marie. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Your turn.
Chip contacted me with a number of reappointments. A couple, we talked about how we might want to handle those, and a couple were pretty simple. First one was Mike Gunn, who's already on the planning commission, was looking to be So I would, since he had already been served, I didn't see a need for us to go back and interview him, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Mike Gunn to for another term to the planning commission.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, seconded by.
I'll second.
Marie, thank you. Any questions on that, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Mike Gunn is appointed to the planning commission. And then on the other two, we just interviewed Tanner McEwen within two months ago, I think, Tanner and Mike, two or three months ago, and same with Denise Smith. They were both appointed to alternates and now are interested in taking full seat based on others who have resigned from the boards. So I'll take one at a time. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Tanner McEwen to a full-time seat on the DRV.
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
I also move to appoint Denise Smith from alternate full-time seat in the planning commission.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Denise Smith to full-time planning commission and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm opposed, for the record. I'm abstaining on that. So despite my one opposition, the motion passes.
Are we going to draw on alternates now or on those boards?
We'll keep recruiting through more. It's a good way to introduce the people to the board, and they move up.
So also, I'd like to remind, I've met with Chip to talk about the Historic Preservation Commission, of which we've had outstanding response to. We have actually seven individuals. We're not to a point where we would appoint them, basically, instead of us going through the whole interview process, what we, Chip and I have discussed, is we'll hold a coffee hour with the group. We will bring in Devon from the state to talk about what the expectations are. We'll do a complete overview over a one-hour period. Anyone on the council is welcome to join us, and I think we were fine with filling the commission with seven individuals. We were excited to see that kind of response. So that's Chip. I don't know if you had a chance to sort of set a date on that, but.
Not yet. We're working on it.
So that's where we're headed with the Historic Preservation Commission. We will keep you informed as we move forward, and it was great to see that kind of turnout. Other items for me, I was contacted by a group who's doing a lot of work with bulk buying for the community. buying for the community as a first step maybe to a pull-up scenario, but they would like to sit down with Dom, myself, Marty, and Chip to just let us know what they're up to, and maybe we'll bring them into the, to the January meeting after that, so. I don't know that I have a whole lot more. Let's go around the council. Jim, we'll start with you.
Thanks to Marty and the crew there for the driveway at the Church Street Courthouse. On a temporary basis, it's great, it's a lot better than it was. I know you're gonna do some more improvements, you do the sidewalks and everything, but it's, it's working great. This may sound foolish, but I'm trying to wrap my head around it, where are we with the trash ordinance? Is that going, is that, it's not in effect yet?
Goes into effect January 1st.
And that, the hollers have to not show up until then, seven?
Yes.
Okay. Have a certain holler that goes to the development below me at 5:30 in the morning, so on Monday, so.
I told you that trash ordinance was gonna wait until.
So, hey, there's some advantages to it, yeah. That's it for me, but it'll be nice to have them not be there at 5:30 in the morning. Marie?
Well, I have a comment about the tree lighting in the park, that was beautiful, it was so well-attended with bonfire, and they did a great job decorating, it really looks nice. There was a nice sense of community there, so, does that comment pass on? Also, somebody asked me, is the parking ban in effect? We talked about the, those strobe lights or whatever.
Talking about downtown, or, and any street lights.
Yes, yeah, is that, where are we with that?
Marty, wanna speak to that?
The, the, our regular parking ban will, has gone into effect on December 1st.
Okay.
And so we'll put notices out if we're gonna do snow removal.
Okay.
But we haven't moved forward with the lights yet, we haven't found a system that we're happy with, so.
Yeah.
On the streets, on the street, on the side streets? Yeah. That's, they, they should be parking there now? Well, they can, and it's more of a common sense approach, if we're gonna do snow removal, we'll put that notice out and let them know, they're not gonna get towed, they would get a warning the first time, and as long as they move them within 24 hours where we can get back in there and clean the area, we'll be okay.
Marty, you talked about a notice, can you let us know what you're thinking about if we're putting the work in?
So we'll go out on all our social media accounts, Front Porch Forum, and any other media that we can do in time. We usually, it's, if we get a big storm, we're usually moving it the next night, we'll pile it that night, move it the next night, so.
Marty, someone made the discussion, I don't know if I shared this with you, but if we could have a conversation with the high school regarding their illuminated sign of, of a parking ban that covers a lot of cars traveling through the.
It's an excellent idea.
If we can get them to cooperate on that, so.
And the only other thing I have is someone commented to me at work that they were concerned about the lighting on Federal Street, it seems very dark there, and they said there's no streetlights, so I kind of took notice of that. There are streetlights that I can see pretty much all the way down, but I don't know if it's because they're up so high or what it is, but it just doesn't seem to throw a lot of light there, plus you get lighting from the.
Talking about the residential portion.
Yes, yeah. You do get lighting from the, the co-op parking lot and that, but I don't know if someone could just maybe look at that and see if that's a concern. Just throwing that out there.
Since we're talking lighting, Marty, someone pointed out to me, and I'm guessing you might have heard it as well, but one light in front of Twigs has been out.
They've ordered a ballast for it, the ballast was out, so.
I'll jump in, just to build off what Marie said, and I only know that Judy Zolvis and Frank Zolvis and Pam Cross were the ones, just a couple, a few of the leaders doing the decorations in the, in the auditorium for the gala and festival trees, and gala sold out, it's a wonderful event, the decorations, so, and I think they're, the amount of money that they will generate for Martha's Kitchen and whatnot will be.
Donna Howard was another.
Donna Howard, yeah, sorry, I think Donna was wonderful too. So they had a whole team, they had, from what I understand, a lot of people have stepped up who have not volunteered in the past and have volunteered to assist, so it was a great community event. Dom, the only other thing I had was Hudson Street, we talked about parking, right, and with paquins, has that fallen through, or is that?
Hasn't fallen through, it hasn't, hasn't been consummated.
Is that the lot right next to the bar?
Yeah, yeah, we're still choosing that.
Kate?
I don't have anything.
Nothing.
I had gotten a couple of calls when a truck got stuck up at Redstone Villa, and I have heard anecdotally that that happens a couple times a year. And there's probably not a lot that we can do to control the vendors up there, but I'm wondering if that's something that we might be able to reach out to the management there and.
We have.
Yeah.
And we continue to, we put signs out. The other thing we might want to look at is doing something with planters or something to narrow that entrance, to discourage them from trying to walk in there and turn around.
And that's a, that's a tricky one to solve, so, but I know that there've been a couple of incidents where lawns have gotten run over and stuff when tractor trailers try to make that turnaround up there, especially in the snow, so.
I think you, what, it happens when there's a new driver, somebody that's not used to delivering there and not familiar with the sequence up there, so.
I relate to one of the folks who called me the day that the truck got stuck a couple weeks ago, that this is the same thing that we're having with the Weldon Street, you know, where you've got a lot of the guys who are driving trucks now are not experienced, they're just doing what the GPS tells them to do or what somebody told them to do, and not thinking all the way through how they're gonna make it out or into the situation, so. Appreciate anything we can do to just keep the lines of communication open up there. Otherwise, things are pretty good work for here.
Just to build off the truck, did you see the email from Chief? So we, we had more complaints of trucks on Upper Weldon, followed up with Chief on it, if I remember correctly, he said there was 162 trucks that had been stopped on Weldon over the last year, and to give people an indication on the amount of emphasis the police department has put on those trucks, and I would say some of the fines have been quite hefty as well, so.
I can't believe it's still happening with the stops and the fines they're paying.
It's definitely far fewer, but it, you know, must be just the first time that particular driver's going through.
The call I got for the day after Thanksgiving was four, four trucks on Upper Weldon.
You know what we could do? We could just figure out the local option tax and just turn Upper Weldon into a toll ridden.
We make more this way. Tim, what do you have?
I got some. First is, I was in the packet, but no one talked about it, Kingman Street.
Yep.
Are we on, we're on schedule, right?
With voter support in March, we are on schedule for 2020.
Okay. It was a nice design pattern, I don't know if people got a chance to look at it.
They did.
I don't know if you can see that, on TV, and there it is, it's gonna be really nice, and that's happening 2020, right? The other thing I have, that they have to do with the stop signs, people are still blowing by the four-way stop going down Lake Street, Lake and Federal, and I was in Fort Lauderdale over the Thanksgiving holiday, and I saw something that caught my attention, actually, my son brought it up, and they had a very small solar ray on a stop sign, and around the stop sign, it was blinking red, and I, I just wondered, I don't know if it'd work up here or not, it certainly works there, and it's, it really sets out the stop sign, and I just think people just don't see it, and they just are, are blowing through there, I've almost got hit a couple of times there, and I've seen cars almost get hit there, and people are just blowing by it, not the, the Catherine Street or Federal Street signs, but the Lake Street signs are what's.
Westbound?
Yeah, yeah, it's what's getting, not getting someone's attention, I don't know if it's too far away, or if they're just not seeing it, but boy, it's, it can be pretty dangerous sometimes there. So just as an idea, I don't know if that's costly or what, or if it would even work here, but it was just something that caught my eye down there, and I thought of that right away.
I would just add that I don't go, I don't go through there every day.
Sometimes?
Sometimes, okay.
The other is, does anyone know what the ordinance is for how far away you can park from a stop sign?
We had that, just so you know, you're talking Rainier Street.
Yeah.
There's a one up on Messenger as well, we had the discussion with Marty and Chief Taylor, Monday, Tuesday was it, maybe? And I think the plan was to not ticket the vehicle right out, but to give, educate them about what the expectation is. I don't know if that has happened yet, Marty, I don't know.
I can check to see if he was gonna try to catch the.
So diseducate.
Very dangerous on Rainier Street, very dangerous.
Don't we saw signs that say, no park, can't appear to corner, and I think.
There are no signs there that say that, but I have seen those signs.
We have them, but we should, we should put some up.
Yeah, that's, that's very dangerous, there's a lot of traffic on that street, there's a lot of truck traffic on that street.
Where is it parking on Rainier?
About 10 feet from the stop sign on the bottom, with a, with a truck and tractor on it.
Chip, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it 20 feet from the stop sign?
Yes, more, yeah.
Yeah, this is very close, you can't, you can just barely get a car past it, but if you got a car coming up at a.
Twenty, but in that intersection there, 20 feet isn't enough?
I, I agree with you, Marty.
Almost at that driveway, nothing below that driveway.
Yeah, but if you have, if you have a tractor trailer trying to get up there to the back of the stop sign.
It's very dangerous, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen there, but someone should take a look at that. The other one was, a four-way stoplight, four-way later, two things, it involves Curry's office. One is, I've had, in the last six months, I would be, if I said less than six, that would probably off, how many people have commented on what it's, how nice it is to deal with that office now? I already told her about it, but I just thought the council would like to hear that as well. So there's a lot of positive feedback there. The other is something that we talked about today, I saw it in the paper about speakeasy, everyone else see it in the paper? However, I never saw a liquor license come through. Anyone else? And I don't know if that's tied into their Twigs license, or I don't, I don't remember seeing it. I wanted to go, but I was too busy going to the other bars first.
They are connected, I don't know to what extent, someone had mentioned the same thing regarding food, if you have a liquor license, you, and they are sort of tying the food into the Twigs.
I just don't want to get in trouble, and I don't know if anyone's thought about it, so like, someone should probably figure it out, and, Kirk, were you gonna call liquor control?
Yeah, I reached out to the Department of Liquor Control today, so hopefully I'll hear back this week, and I included the area app person for us, so, I'll let you guys know.
It's, it's better if they act now before someone else comes around and tries to give a finer.
You're inquiring as, if they're included under one?
Yeah, just to see if they're, you know, if it's just something included under one, or if there's any special population, or it should be two.
And if they say no, then we'll reach out to Tom and the company to sort of.
Done.
Anything else, folks?
I have to go, one more, I'm taking off.
You're taking Chad, you're taking Chad. It's quite all right.
The, the two little trees on Lake Street going up to Main have Christmas lights on, but they're not lit, so I don't know if it's just a matter of an extension cord or what that is, but it was kind of funny because hotels all lit up and.
Is it the ones in front of the courthouse?
No, it's, it's up towards, towards Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think there's also one west of the courthouse, just before the.
And I have one more, actually, I forgot, we have a finance mini-meeting coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, yeah. What would you like to make? Usually we meet that first week when we're back.
We gotta get going, right?
First week we're back from.
So the budget's pretty much done, Tom and I are thinking, we'll try to get it out to you before the holiday.
And then meet, what's our, what's our meet drop dead date?
So, I think my phone died. It kind of connects into this hearing question too, but basically, I was thinking, so our meeting is the third, week of the 13th, which feels a little late, so I was thinking we could meet, meet at six, the week of the sixth and look at it.
Anything going on that we can't meet up there?
I will be up there, so I guess we have to ask whoever.
Oh, okay.
Are you retired?
I will be on the 20th of December.
So we're, well, maybe we can meet here then.
Meet here.
I'm sure no one is gonna meet up there, we have.
It might make sense to be late the week of the first.
Yeah, that was, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that.
I'll be around.
So, I'll send out an email to you guys.
And we'll get it a week before, so we could take a look at it.
Yeah, I'll hope them to give it to you before Christmas.
Okay.
I actually would prefer that, legislature's back on the seventh, so, yeah, before would be better for me.
We can defer it the first of the Wednesday, right?
First of Wednesday, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean.
So we'd have to do the 30th or 31st, right? December?
Second or third.
Yeah, yeah, the week of the 30th.
Anyway, after the 20th of December, I, I think I'm gonna do it by the.
Maybe like the second or something?
Okay, wrapping up with warrants and minutes.
Motion to approve minutes, 11:11.
Meeting for the minutes.
Second.
Second by Kate, motion by Tim, any comments, corrections, amendments? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was I at that meeting, or am I talking?
You were not at that meeting.
Okay, then, we're two of states. I don't have any person here.
Prove our warrants.
Warrants, 11:15, 19.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike for approval of warrants, 11:15, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Warrants, 11:29, 19.
Second.
Motion to approve warrants, 11:29, by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second. End of hearing, thank you all.